Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
We are going to call this thing to order at 5:41 PM. And for people on the Zoom meeting, we're not able to see all of you, just the speaker at the moment. So I guess just yell if you're trying to get our attention.
I'm going to take the ten minutes for who's here.
Cheryl Charles. Trying to pull up my agenda here. Okay, Cheryl Charles is here. Lynn Morgan is here. I have to ask Ricky, who else is here?
Okay, so we have Andy Haas, Lynn Morgan, Stacy Alexander, Cheryl Charles, back TV, Glenn Hankinson, and Susan Small here, and Tara Darrow.
Who were the last ones?
It's Glenn Hankinson, Susan Small here, and Tara Darrow.
All right, so we have Lynn, Cheryl, Molly, Deb, Priscilla, me, Jack, and Brenda. Is that everybody? We're missing.
David Clark, is David Clark?
David Clark is no longer on the board.
Right. Jason.
He's on the high school board.
But he's not on the SU.
Jason Benson.
That one. Is Jason Benson on the SU? Jason Terry is on the high school board.
Molly, who's on for high school? You, Brenda, you're, all three of you are here.
Yes.
My members from the Rockingham Board are not here. Um, Jason can't be here, and I haven't seen Megan Ford's case. Just said he would be here, but I haven't seen her.
Uh, he's in Florida.
I know, but he said he would.
Yeah, well, he had to use, my phone had trouble, well, he had to use his phone, he had trouble Zoom, couldn't use the Zoom properly. And it was also, he had problems on that end, too.
Okay.
Because he could have been, he could have called in.
Nicole, isn't that the request for unpaid leave that was already on there? That is for Cheryl.
Okay, that was already.
And there's a para as well that Andy would probably speak to.
So that's a second one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're private order, right?
We are called to order, so now we're on adjustments to the agenda. We've been going through our notes here because we have a few. First, Priscilla pointed out, we need to also approve January 12th. January 12th minutes.
Okay.
So.
Copy those somewhere quoting that I don't, didn't bring up.
The January 12th? They are on the website.
Yeah, just, I just want to do it quickly faster as well.
Uh, 8D is going to be MOU for COVID bonuses. Or COVID retention. COVID, it's a MOU for a COVID thing.
A MOU for sign-on and retention bonuses.
Okay, sign-on and retention bonuses. And does anyone else have any adjustments? Jack, you've had something? Okay, communication and public comments. Oh, Lynn, were you going to speak?
Jessica, could you repeat what the, um, what was it, 8B adjustment? I heard something about COVID.
8D is in Delta. With the union for COVID monies for sign-on and retention bonuses.
Okay. Thank you.
And Esser funds, which.
There was some circulation about whether that was, we were needed to sign off on that, and I gather that it was swayed in that it was a good idea.
Yes. So, communication, public comment, do we have any? Ricky, can you see the people?
Yeah, I don't see any hands.
If I get in the Zoom meeting, can I change my view, or is it the meeting that's?
Yes, you can.
All right, let me do that. Give me one second here. So no hands on communication and public comments. Next up, meeting minutes. Priscilla, I'm going to.
I make a motion that we approve, let's do them separately, January 12th, 2022 minutes. All right, and the reason we're doing this separately is that there are a few corrections to that one. Charlie should be moved to others in attendance. On, on page two, it refers to, we can. Policies, it says in February, it should say next meet. Because we did vote on those at the January 26th meeting, so putting in next meeting would be a better thing there. And under director's comments again.
I know, she says she can hear us, so.
And on my, on the last vote, Molly Bannock motioned on hiring Andy Haas, the vote was unanimous. And then the date of the next meeting is January 26th, not February 26th. Okay, so several corrections.
I have a motion to approve the corrections.
So move.
All right, roll call, I guess. Lynn? Cheryl?
Uh, yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack?
Deb.
Brenda?
Yes.
Okay. You have another one?
Okay, then I would move to approve the January 26th, 2022 minutes. Right, and do we have corrections?
Just a minor one for me, uh, the discussion is about being a STEM or. Part of the issue was the arts and the role in our community.
Where was that?
That was in, uh, that's under eight old finished business, and it's got a big dot on it, and it was, uh, at the bottom there.
So you had, it was a STEAM one and STEM or.
STEM or STEAM.
So STEAM because of the arts.
So we'll just add STEM or STEAM, right, because the difference is simply that in a STEAM, they add arts.
Right, and that was, because that's been a, an identifier for communities, that was one reason why I made the comment at all.
Yeah, and again, move Charlie to others in attendance.
You're taking notes?
Tara is.
Tara is, okay. All right, um, that is the motion to approve as corrected. Um, Lynn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
abstain, I wasn't here.
Deb abstains, do you make a note? Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack?
No.
Brenda?
abstain, I wasn't there.
Brenda abstains, do we need the chair vote? Although, yes.
No, it's just, it's just the.
Okay.
Ones that are, and the ones in attendance, so.
That's in the jury, the ones in attendance. Okay. And then, now the total of the majority, sorry. Pro vote.
Are you an honorary gift of Robert's rules as you're stepping off the board, yeah?
Yes, um. And I actually need to revisit number two, adjustments to the agenda. And this is a, there will be no action, and it should be a very short discussion because I already have the answer. But Jason Terry would like us to address the mask requirements in light of the AOE. So can we add that for 8E as an echo?
Maybe get down to four seven?
We are, because it's a non-action.
Okay.
Because I found the answer after I talked to him, so I wanted to. Put it on there.
Yeah.
Yes. Policy committee update.
Uh, the policy committee has met a couple times, three, I think this month, we've been really busy. We have some policies to approve under 7A, but we also have some policies that need to be posted, and those are F1, F2, F20, F1, F23, F24, C7, and C8. Those involve travel reimbursement, capitalization of assets, prevention of conflict of interest and procurement, all needed to be able to put out our funds that are coming through to us through grants. Uh, student attendance, C7, and C8, which is people privacy rights, and we will get those posted. We didn't have enough time to get them posted before this meeting, because you need to, 10 days, and that meeting was last Wednesday.
And well, that counts as the first read and read and post.
Um, it needs to be 10 days that they are posted, and so that the community can, um, look at them and assess them and respond. And we can also, as a board, and then we can approve them.
So 10, next meeting, we'll put them on for approval.
Right. Okay.
Well, now I just closed everything, I'm sorry. Okay. Next up, 6A, superintendent's report. Andy?
Hi, thank you very much. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I just wanted to, I was asked last time if we could give an Esser update, and so I wanted to focus my efforts, knowing that it's a long meeting, just around the Esser. So I'm going to try and share my screen from here and see what I can do. Can you guys see that? Okay. Of course, now I got to figure out how to make it. All right, so, um, just, uh, so everyone is aware, we, we have three Esser grants. We refer to them as Esser 1, Esser 2, and then ARP Esser or Esser 3. And ARP stands for the American Recovery Plan. So in our first, in Esser 1, we received just a little over $1.4 million. And those funds are set to be sunset or go away as of September 2022. So this coming September. And so this just kind of demonstrates where those dollars have been allocated. We're still in the process, this is, uh, we all know the, the books weren't updated at the beginning of the year, so we're still building the budget into e-finance. Um, and, and just making sure we've got everything in the correct account codes, so that I, uh, we know exactly where we spent the monies, like what we spent on, uh, of the $1.4 million. But essentially, 48% was allocated to items that addressed Central Office, and, and that includes the move of Central Office to its new location. And the, uh, the scanning of all of the documents that were in the basement at Cherry Hill. Um, and so that, that was quite a large amount from it. Um, other large percentages, obviously salaries that we've had for different interventionists that we use to try and address loss of learning. That also is in our Title I costs that are there. And then there, quite a bit has been introduced into technology. And then, um, you know, just some of the other pieces that we, we have, uh, you know, uh, we've invested. So you can see about 3% was targeted just for the high school. And then about 2% went into health office equipment and whatnot. Um, and then another large portion, which was cafeteria tables that were purchased for across the entire SU, which to help spread students out. And, and then also about 6% for safety, that had to do with a lot of buying of PPE. A new transportation vehicle was purchased to help with some of the transportation and spreading kids out, so. And I could take questions, I can't see anyone, but I could take questions as they go, or I can kind of go through the whole thing. What's your preference?
Andy?
Yeah.
I have a couple of things. You've got a couple of these that are segmented in rather dark blue, and I suspect there's writing in them, but I can't have no idea what it says.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the one over here, Jack, to the, to the left, just above the, the large central office, this says technology. That had to do with like Chromebooks and things of that nature. And then the, the other one up here, um, that is, uh, this is materials for summer school and whatnot. But I can list this out, I was just trying to, I thought a graphic might look a little better, but I, I do admit it's, it is a little tough, so.
Other question. Where is, in Central Office, where is the summer programs that we ran, the, uh, the summer school, which was far larger than we've had in the past? And my understanding is all that was out of Esser money, is that, do, I mean, I see the high school, but I don't see like the Westminster program or what was done at the Rockham.
Yeah, yeah, Jack, good question. So when I, when I broke that out, it's broken out into salaries, it's a large portion of our salaries, the summer school programming. But also there's materials, there's about $30,000 over here that were materials for summer school. And, um, and the reason why the high school was broken out is, is these were items that were specifically tagged for the high school, like the, um, the track timer, uh, which was a large portion of that was, was introduced there. And on the next slide, just let me fast forward a little, I know this is probably pretty granular to you guys. But this just listed out just a little better in that sense of, of where things are, but. So things like the summer school program are all intertwined, because also what was used in summer school is 21C money. And that was used at, uh, at like the Westminster and the Grafton site, but also at the, at the middle school. So that's some of the stuff we're still trying to sort out, uh, to give you a better picture of that.
So this is money that's already been spent?
So. Yeah, so it's not necessarily all been spent yet, but it has been all allocated. And so, um, again, some of the things like in Central Office, um, which makes up a large portion, is the Director of Operations, the Administrative Assistant that was brought on to help do the grants. There's still, we're still spending on those line items, so we haven't, we haven't completed all this spending. But we're, this is just to show you how that monies were allocated. We're still, as I said at the beginning, we're still trying. Because the budget hadn't been built into e-finance, we're having to go back and recreate that and make sure everything is tagged to the right line, so.
Deb, those allocations come up to more than 1.4 million.
I'm sorry?
If you go back to the, either back to the pie or to the chart, the very next, the second one you showed.
Let me go backwards.
Um, add those up, oh, not down, Esser 1.
Esser 2.
Yeah, sorry.
Back one more. Hang on.
One more.
Well, that, well, it doesn't matter, that's already, that's a list of the, all of those pieces of the pie up, it's more than 1.483. Way more. So I don't understand how that comes to 1.483, when just go to the list, you can add, do a running total, it's, it's way more than 1.4.
Oh, yeah.
It's way more, it doesn't make any sense, so the pie's wrong.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd have to go back and look that, I, I apologize, I, I am traveling, so I was trying to put this together, um, as, as things work. And so I might have grabbed things twice in some of these pieces, so I do apologize. So. I would have to go back and, and, and break that out again.
Okay, if you could, and then maybe post it.
Yeah.
Molly, did you have questions, too?
Nope.
Cheryl or Lynn, do you have?
I'm, I'm looking at it too, oh, this is Esser 2, no wonder that doesn't make sense. I'm not sure I, I get the same total that Deb does, because the numbers on this chart that we're looking at right now do seem to correspond to the pie chart, and they do add up to 1.483. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure. I know that Andy's a little handicapped while traveling here, but I'm, you might run that. Yeah, it looks, it actually looks accurate to me, and I'm familiar with these numbers as we've gone through them. You know, um, Priscilla and I and others are a part of the committee that meets with Andy weekly, um, and we've been going through all of this in some detail.
Well, that would like.
Seven, five. It's almost, yes, it's more of 1 point, yeah, it's more like 1 and 3/4 millions.
Yeah, I think it's probably, it's probably something's been pulled twice.
Yeah, so Andy can correct that.
Yeah, no, so, so I, what I tried to do was consolidate down, because a lot of it is not going to make sense to the general public. And so I was trying to capture things and put them into both areas. So what I'll need to do is I, I, we can post and, and send out the, the, the full report that comes out of, right out of the grant, so.
I just, okay, I have two questions.
Yep.
One, timer was paid for out of Esser money?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Said a timer for the track?
Yep.
At a recovery item?
That was something requested by your former.
Yes.
Or superintendent, and in particular, your former principal of the high school.
At the high, well, who's running for office, yeah.
And there it is.
Can you find out more detail on the track timer and how we frame that recovery and got it approved?
Yeah, I, um, I'm going to pull it up right now as we're talking, so, um, if you want to.
You can, you can get it out to us later. And then, um, Esser monies for the local independent schools are funneled from here, because I see we have allocations to Compass and for Manhattan.
Again, these were, these were allocations that were made prior to my tenure. So I don't know. Without having to go back and, and, um, I have not worked with distributing any funds to any of our independent schools. I'm not 100%, I wouldn't want to speak to, uh, where that was around, like, uh, like I know with title funds, we have to give a certain percentage to, to our independent, you know, schools, um, but I don't know about Esser funds.
Turn that out as well, please.
Yep.
Thank you. Next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one road with a trap.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
It's a night. It's already been spent, so, carry on.
All right. So with, um, with looking at Esser 2, um, we, again, we tried to do some of the same capturing here, um, and, and rolling the, um, I'm not even sure what this one is, because I don't know why that has that in there. It, so in, in looking at where we're looking at spending this $5.8 million, and so that's how much we got in Esser 2, was 5.8 million. And again, looking at trying to grab those areas and trying to put them together, we are spending, now this, this grant goes through September of 2023, so we have not spent all of these dollars in any capacity. So some of this is what has been allocated. And there is, there is usually some shifting as priorities change and, and as we move forward. So, um, one of the things that we wrote into the Esser 2 funds was for the health assistance. And, and then we wrote it for, um, you know, the years out when we originally wrote the strategy. If we're finding that we're no longer needing health assistance, then we'll reduce those dollars to reflect what we actually need. So there's some, there's constantly some shifting in, in the grant. But right now, about, about half of the grant is, is allocated for salaries. Again, that has to do with interventionists, it has to do with, uh, the Director of Operations, uh, the Grant Administrative Assistant, um, and things of that nature. Again, benefits are a large portion, um, also that take up a lot of our, our piece. And to try and look at where we are in some of this, um, we've invested and allocated about 5% for professional development. This has to do with not only just what we think of as traditional professional development, but also has to do with nature-based, um, outdoor, um, learning, and, and other, other ways of looking at how we can provide teaching in, um, in our, in, as we recover from COVID. We had, um, you know, again, teacher preparedness and getting teachers ready. The, uh, we did a small investment around English as a, uh, English language learners. We'll talk a little bit about our Afghan refugee families that are coming in later. Remote learning, which was a big piece. Again, allocated, um, and, and the reason why I'm tagging the high school is because these are specific to the high school that are being tagged, uh, for projects at the high school. Other, uh, and many of them were, were, again, prior, um, going in. And then family engagement, safety, family engagement, uh, again, technology, and then indirect costs, and these are costs that, um, we can charge back to the grant, uh, for the management of the grant.
All right, Lynn and Cheryl, do you have any questions?
Cheryl? I have none.
Yeah, not right now, thank you.
Um, I have one. The high school is getting line items in both of these, yet the other schools are getting their benefits delivered only through SU-provided services, is that correct?
So the, the, the high school, one of the big things at the high school, um, that's taking a large chunk of that $400,000 is the circuit breaker, um, project that we talked about earlier, um, which was the circuit breaker was, had failed and the generator's not kicking on. Um, and that was the reason for that piece. You know, we have, uh, as a committee, we've talked about other projects, um, throughout the SU, um, that need to be addressed. Some of them, uh, that the committee has looked at, um, looking to allocate those in our ARP Esser, so that's just why you're not seeing them here, um, at this point. Uh, but some of them have to do with, uh, Grafton, with, there's some, uh, windows, um, that need to be addressed in the playground. At Westminster, we've talked about a heat pump, um, and some varying heat pumps in the roof. And, uh, at, um, and, and I could talk about the others when we get to the ARP Esser, because it's a little more spelled out at that point, so.
No, I want to hear from.
Have we gotten any determination on whether, because the Grafton School is owned by the town now, whether we can use any of that for that?
So I, I did just email that off, I just got that prior to the meeting, um, and, uh, the, the citation was sent to me, and I sent that off to the town of Grafton. We do have to own the building to be able to use the Esser funds.
Bummer. Does Westminster own their building now? Did they take that back?
They took.
You got the building back?
That was part of the agreement, actually, we.
Although, do you have it back, or will you have it back in July?
We have it back in July. But you, but we, as, as the, as the current, as the incumbent district, own the building. So we, the title will transfer, we have the transfer, with, with the devolution.
Oh, I thought their building was also sold back to the town.
No, the, the, uh, attitude was, but that's off, we're the only one that has this issue, and I'm hoping we can persuade our select board that it's significant enough that, uh, they would rather not pay for these improvements out of local tax line.
That'll be for the next meeting.
Oh, it shall be.
All right, Andy, you have more?
Priscilla has.
Yeah, so, oh, go ahead.
Well, Sarah, yeah, I just want to ask that question.
I have one comment, and that is that I think that the development of remote learning and family engagement percentages are way too small. That's my only concern, is that not enough of those funds are being attributed to those areas, that's all.
Isn't that a problem, though, because what we're trying to do is, it's for recovery, not for continuing remote learning and continuing those kinds of things.
But all the money's not about recovery, some of it is for long-term advancement. Otherwise, you wouldn't need that track thing.
Well, we're not talking about that first thing.
We talked about it last time, we have a discussion, it was a problem back then. Uh, Andy?
Yeah.
I, I'm noticing that in the, I want to switch back. I, I'm noticing that in the, I want to switch back to the Esser two for just a split second if we might. The, you've got a, a breakdown of about a third of that by function. Which is great, that's what we want, we want to see by function. The salaries and benefits, indirect costs, is still, you know, three point eight million of, of the pile, and I don't know what those are going specifically to. If we can get those broken out, you should have a salaries and benefit thing, and then you should have one that, that breaks out by, by function, you know, it's going to go.
And. Yeah, and I, and I, I, I could show you that, Jack, I mean, that's, and, and, and the reason it gets, it gets real, it does get real granular. And so for this presentation, I was trying to, I didn't know how much time, I know I can tend to get long-winded, so I was trying to bundle things a little. But. Let me just pull this up and.
Give us two pie charts, one that shows it by function, one that shows it by what the, you know, where the money's going in terms of salaries, contracts, whatever.
Yeah, so that's, just so everyone kind of sees how it ends up looking in the grant, is, is the reason why, with the allowable use of funds. So these are the codes that, that the, that the state gives us. So we have Title I, Maintenance of Ops, but they're not always just necessarily all, so it's Maintenance of Ops and Employment, so it's not, it's not Maintenance of Operations. So here, you can see that one of the things that we use for salary was these VTVLCT teachers that taught last year. So one of the things in the grant, because the grants, you're allowed to put some monies in there that were retroactive. So these are, these, these are the different salary lines. So right now, that's allocated, there's about two hundred thousand dollars allocated for summer school. And, and then, then there's salaries allocated for after-school programming. And, and then right now, you have salaries for the interventionists that are at each school. And again, these are over the life of the grant. So then you have salaries for teachers who provide tutoring at our after-school programming. And again, here's more salaries for after-school programming. And some of this is when, as I, as I said at the beginning, when we had to grab these by November of twenty-one. We just grabbed large areas with the idea that we would go back and start reallocating or using the monies, you know, where we didn't need them. So we're still trying to sort out a little bit of this summer school, which is, you know, just the leftover mess that we have. And once we get and know really what did summer school cost us, then we can go back here and we can start accurately manipulating these, these dollars, cause, you know, if we didn't spend two hundred thousand dollars on summer school, cause this is this actual line item right here is for twenty-one, summer of twenty-one. So here's summer of twenty-two. So if we didn't spend two hundred thousand dollars, and we can adjust this line, which is going to free up dollars to be used other places. Does that make a little, yep?
We do have a hard stop at seven tonight.
All right, yep, so I, that's, yeah, so let me, all right, let me just go back and go run through the. The rest. So, so with the ARP-ESR, or Esser three, we were awarded about thirteen, just over thirteen million dollars. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now, these numbers will not add up, so if you're adding numbers up there, you're gonna find out that they're not adding up, and the reason is, is this, is the committee is still working.
We just have to request.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking these loosely, don't worry.
Let, let's move along.
Okay, so, so what, what I'm trying to say is. That, that these are, can you see my screen? I don't know if you can. This is our bester.
Budget detail, you're still on the budget detail and you're.
All right, hang on, hang on, okay, so let me, I don't know why that happened, all right. Let me do this. Oh, I know why, okay. So I apologize, all right, so with the, with the ARP-ESR, with the thirteen million, and, and as I say, these are not going to add up cause the committee is still working on prioritizing these and looking at them. And we're going to be putting a survey out to families and, and, and looking also to maybe have a meeting and, and get some families in and, and talk about some things. But one of the first things we have to do with the thirteen million is we have to set aside twenty percent to address academic impact of lost instruction. So one, some of the areas we're proposing is the Director of Innovation and Instruction. And again, this, these monies go through September of twenty-four. An MTSS coordinator, and these are really targeted at that instruction of our students and innovating our instruction and, and adjusting it to meet the, the needs of our learners, whether they're in the building or not in the building. Including that remote learning and, and building that piece up. The, supporting our Afghan refugees, as I said, we have, we have two new families moving into our community who will be attending our schools at Bellows Falls. They're gonna be with us, we anticipate additional ones coming into the community, and so we want to try and be prepared for that. Again, continuing our after-school programming. Responsive classroom training, we invested hi, heavily in that this year. We found some real positives about dealing with kids and emotions and how we respond universally to them. So again, this is looking at training planned out for the next couple of years. Restorative practices, training and support, again, we have, we've really seen a, a big kick in this, this year, a real positive kick. And so we see a lot of positive in continuing that. Our Zen Den, which we piloted at Central, which kind of ties back to restorative practices and responsive classroom. But it's looking at staffing and materials and replicating that throughout the, the SU. So it's not just at one place, but it's a, it's kind of a, you might have heard it as a reboot room or a reset room. But it's Zen Den, it's just the, the term we're using. And then just assessment and data materials to, to. Again, so we know where our students are, so that we can address the, the learning loss. And then the, that's a typo up there, I can see that already, sorry. So the, the remainder dollars that we have left over, which is really ten million dollars, not four hundred and ten million dollars, so I apologize. So one of the things the committee has really talked about is an early child learning center, that would be birth through pre-K and a new supervisory au, union office. And we've kind of really loosely ballparked that out at around five million dollars. The committee really feels that this could be an investment in our community for years and years to come. There's very little childcare in, in the area, and so, but also really making something that is robust and very targeted for that age-appropriate students. Heating and ventilation system upgrades at all of our buildings. We're anticipating is around four million dollars, you can see that already just took up the bulk of that ten million dollars. So it's something we need to kind of really hone in. A facilities audit, which will actually help inform that heating and ventilation system upgrade. What that would do is bring a company in to look at all of our buildings and help us understand where we need to look for years at the shape of our buildings. Also a facilities audit for educational technology systems across the SU, this is our IT stuff. Basically, as we invest more and more in remote learning, but also in technology, we want to make sure that our systems are up to speed and, and can continue to carry us for the next ten plus years. Central Elementary, the kitchen there is the last building that hasn't been upgraded in a long time, that's a pretty real number, the two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Upgrading our camera and door systems at, at all of our schools to help provide some safety, but also monitoring who, you know, who's coming and going allows for some remote pieces for operation. A lot of the systems we have right now, they're not universal, they're not, they're not the same across the, the SU. Building management system upgrades for various buildings, again, that gets tied into our heating and ventilation systems. And then varying projects across individual buildings, and I talked about some of those, but, you know, like heat pumps, but roof upgrades, windows at varying places, some doors. So that's where the committee is kind of looking at spending that, that other thirteen million dollars kind of in the future, so. But I don't know if there's questions on that, so.
You have other things in your superintendent's report, or is it just Esser?
I, I can talk about the Afghan refugees, that's what I, I'd forgotten that it was a separate piece, but I can talk about that later or, or right now.
It's number eight, and it's number eight.
Okay.
All right, so then A, review and approve required policies.
So the policies that are on there, and they were posted the twelve, on the ele, eleven. Two eleven twenty-two is what I had put down there, so that we could approve them tonight. B three is an alcohol-free workplace policy. C four is drug and alcohol testing transportation for employees. C eight, electronic communications between employees and students. C one is education records. Three, transportation. C four is English learners, and C five is firearms and weapons. Are there any questions about any of those?
Yes, one thing, which is C four, and I didn't see any of the others. I'm sorry, B four, sorry, B four, which is the drug and alcohol testing. I would ask that we that we get rid of identifiers like his and her and change them to their. Most of the documents that we do in the municipality remove the pronoun of any of sex and simply put their, more generic, and it just, it works easier and less words anyway, so you say a few characters. That's why I'm recommending that we, we change it to their.
I think that counts as a grammatical correction, it does not need reposting. I'm sorry, so C one, and I lost count. C three, C three, C four.
C four.
And C five.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, there's seven of them.
Okay, we have a motion to, now I would make a motion that we approve the required policies. So B three, B four. That seems perfectly fine, Jack, can you use your iPad? Yes. Okay, roll call vote, we shall start with Cheryl.
Um, yes, approved.
Lynn?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack?
Yep.
Brenda?
Yes.
All right, and almost all of us here are on that committee, so. I have not made hardly any of those meetings.
You have your community member going forward.
Send the angry parent, Cheryl, right now. Job description for the Director of Innovation and Instruction.
Yeah, so this, we'd like to get this posted as soon as possible, so we could start generating some traction. But what we're looking to do, again, using, using some funds through Esser, but also some funds through our consolidated title grants. And, and it's, I mean, we've had variations of this position with the Director of Curriculum. Also, you know, Missy Wilkins, some of what Lynn Carey did do was part of the curriculum and instruction piece, but the Director of Innovation and Instruction, as I said, would really be coordinating the efforts of the SU to address the development and implementation using an MTSS model, and MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Which is looking at, at students at all levels and meeting them where they are. So what we're looking to do is to, is to post this, it would be a two hundred and thirty-day position with a salary range of about seventy to eighty thousand dollars.
What do you need from us?
Well, the, the contract says that the board needs to approve all new positions, so, and that, that's my understanding. So that's the reason I'm bringing it to you.
All right, a motion for that, we need a motion for that, does somebody have a motion for that?
A motion.
Anyone at all?
I'm, get my hand up.
Okay, Jack?
Yes. Do we need specifics on that, Andy, you know, in terms of salary not to exceed or any of that, or we could, with just a motion to authorize you?
I, I would. I, I mean, that's the salary range, but I, yeah, if you want to put an exceed on it.
I like the salary range, I would prefer we not put, I would prefer we have a range. I would prefer we leave salary off it. They're working at unless you have done that research, you said seventy to eighty, but I'm, I'm willing to let you.
Okay.
Anybody objects, let him have the flexibility.
There was a reason I was asking.
Yeah, as long as it's not going to exceed by, you know, an amount that, that you feel that should come back.
It's not gonna come, it's not gonna be in the resolution, I mean, in case, and I think we just, we'll, we'll, we'll trust you in working it out, Andy. One, one question on this, which is, this position is going to be considered a a permanent position or a temporary position, because we have funding on a temporary basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it would, it would be a, it'd be a grant-funded position with the opportunity for us to evaluate in the next couple of years, you know, where we're seeing our you know, the, the implementation of new instruction, and then looking to potentially move a portion of the salary maybe to local, but I, I really wanted to evaluate and see where we were in the next couple of years before. And, and use the opportunity of the grant for that.
A two-year contract?
Yes.
Contract, okay.
Two-year contract.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would rather than in that case of what Andy's just said, that we not make it any kind of a permanent position that we, because that can always be reevaluated by the board at that time, but we're not tying future boards to, to what we're doing.
Motion would be for a grant position.
That's what he's saying, and also, the, the reality is, we can, we have it within our ability to cut, cut, and, and, and order staff cuts. Future board can, can order that and a half, if they're crazy enough to do that.
So what's your motion then?
My motion is to authorize the superintendent to hire on a contract basis. I think this is the right, a Director of Instructional Innovation, and for a term of two years. To be renewed at his end of board's discretion.
All right, any other commentary or questions? No, Cheryl, roll call them, Cheryl.
Yeah, I approve.
Lynn, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
Jack?
Yep.
Brenda?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is ratify the budget motion. I think this was requested.
Point of information.
Yeah.
The budget was on the January twelve minutes. It was on the agenda for that night, as far as a budget. on the agenda for that night, as far as a budget update and with possible action. And we had the motion, we passed the budget. So I'm trying to figure out why it would be on tonight.
What we rat, why are we ratifying it?
Right.
I am now no longer sure who or how that was requested. But what we can do is, I can ask for a motion, and nobody can speak, and we can move on to the next thing.
Yeah, there's that.
Unless somebody has something else they'd like to do.
We'll be passed over the item of that, we've got a chance here.
I hear a motion to ratify the budget, moving on.
I think I say yes.
So eight A, and forgive the board chair, at least I have your names right tonight, but we're going to revisit adjustments to the agenda because there's actually two requests for unpaid leave. Eight A as requests for unpaid leave.
Requests.
Requests in the multiple, right of the pair apart. Request unpaid, times two. If nobody objects to that breach in meeting etiquette here. Are we doing that in are we doing that in open session? I don't know when, I don't remember how we usually do this.
Um, if we're going to discuss personnel, we should do it in executive session.
I think I would like to do it in executive session, just because the reason I would like to do it in executive session is usually a request for leave included like personal or medical information on why they're asking for it.
Right, so that's
So we can come out of protecting, we can move to make that an executive session item. And then if need be, we can come out and do it in open session, we have to move on an open session anyway.
Anyway.
Is that acceptable? Excellent. Afghan refugees.
Yeah, so, yeah, just real, real quick, just so the board and the community is aware, as I said, we have two families that are being relocated into the Rockingham area. And they, the two families have four children. Three of them are currently of school age, ready, so they will be entering our school system soon. Some of the timing is, is a little murky, just on all of that, but you know, just to let you know that Olivia why her last name just went right out of my head, and I apologize. Who is our, Olivia is our, our ELL teacher. And I'm going to get Clark, yes, I, I wanted to make sure I had that right, so Olivia Clark has done a great job of getting up to speed and also making sure our staff is aware of it, so she's already done a whole staff training at Central about culture and communicating, and how teachers will do it. She's also going to be going in and doing training for each of the classrooms that the students will be going into. And then also providing assistance and training to our teachers who have never taught ELL students. We're setting up translation, translation services. You know, so that we can communicate with families. We've got to get some placement tests ready. Because we don't have them in that language, and so we need to kind of get up to speed. And, and then we're also doing things like setting up registration meetings with the family and interpreters. And so that the students can feel welcome, and the families can feel welcome, and then we're also just making sure we're we're working to get texts that are in, you know, the that are multilingual and culturally diverse for the families, but I think it's an exciting opportunity for our overall community. And as I said, there's been indication that there may be additional refugees coming, so it's, it's something really exciting for us to look forward to. But just wanted to update the board.
Alright, thank you for that. Any questions from out there, Cheryl? No? Okay. Okay, uh, we are on eight C superintendent contract. And since we will be discussing an employment contract and a personnel issue, that's going to go to executive session. Eight A, eight C. Uh, nine A.
Wait, wait, you got D and E.
Oh crap, I added E. Eight D, MOU, sign-on and retention. That's also you, Andy.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just pulling it up here, so one of the things we are looking to do, it's one of the things that is allowable under Esser is to use the Esser funds for retention of staff. We
Discuss it. Or we want to discuss it in open session. My board discussed it in, in exec session for the specific reasons that one of our board members was not sure about impact on negotiations in there.
But now we've already discussed it in open session.
Well, we haven't discussed it, we came out any more than what that is, and it's basically out there. But if there's anybody with any concerns about it and impact on negotiations, we should do it in exec session. If none of you do, we decided with Rockingham that it was a separate issue. And so when we came out of that, we voted on it, so I just wanted that out there, so that if there was any possibility of somebody being concerned.
Oh, Cheryl is our negotiator, right?
Cheryl and, and Priscilla and I are your negotiators.
Cheryl, what do you think about doing this in open session as opposed to executive session?
The, the business we're talking about right now, the retention and hiring bonuses, is that what you're asking? I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, I think there's, there's already been a lot of sentiment in support of it. Help me if there's any issue for why we should not do it in open session. I'm, I'm open to what others are saying. It's not a negotiation-related issue.
Cheryl, what I said was that we did it at exec, at Rockingham Board, we did it in, in exec session because one of our members had concerns over it possibly impacting negotiations. And so we did it in exec session, but we decided that, you know, it really doesn't, should not have an impact on that, it is a separate issue, so what I brought up to this board is if, do, I just didn't know what they wanted, wanted to bring that up before we discussed it.
Deeply mindful of the time.
We have ten minutes, basically.
I, I think we're probably going to have to recess and come back, which is unfortunate, but I think that's what we're looking at here. The, I wouldn't mind having this in, in executive session, because there was some advice we got from a person helping us with negotiations, and I think that's important to at least touch on. So if, if you don't mind.
Throw it to executive session. I, um
Let's be real brief.
It's contractual.
Well, Andy, didn't you have to provide? Didn't you have to provide this information with our grant application that is already a publicly discoverable document?
Um, I don't know if it's a publicly I, I don't know the answer to that, Jessa. It, it, it did go through the grant management system, but I don't know if that is a publicly obtainable system, so.
We have plenty enough time to, somebody move, somebody move that this is an executive session item and say why, and then we can discuss that motion.
I move that we should also include the MOU in session because of the possible impact on negotiations and thereby getting pre to, to individuals or to the board.
You don't need a motion for that, you just need to say, that's what it is.
We've been going through this with Mr. David Clark, and we are going to have a motion declaring executive session.
No, no, you need to tell them exactly what's going to be in it, but yes, and of course it shouldn't have been pre-done before this agenda was done.
So we can, we can move on Cheryl's, Cheryl's motion that it is for executive session because it is a negotiations item. So now we can have discussion on that motion.
Let's just
Shall we call the question?
Yes, yes, please.
Question's been called, Lynn, do you want this MOU in executive session, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
I'm going to vote no, write it down. Jack?
Yeah.
And, or Brenda?
Yes.
Okay. The yeses have it, that will be an executive session item. And that brings us to an excellent point. Unless
Eighty.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Eight E, and this will fill up the last three minutes and no more, I promise. Um, I had a question about and it, I had a question about dropping the mask requirement based on the latest guidance from the state. And first, that has very little to do with this board, because it's a local board issue. But second, then I went and found, I got advice from the state, and the local boards all voted to adopt the state guidance. And now there's new state guidance. The, the person was asking if we had metrics decided on when we would drop masking in schools. Currently, the state guidance recommends vaccinated eighty percent of and it doesn't say eligible, it says eighty percent of students vaccinated. So we voted to follow the state guidance, that is the state guidance. I fully expect the AOE is going to be putting out new guidance by next Tuesday. So it's not, we had no action anticipated, and I found the answer to the question, and now it's out there for everybody. And it's a local board issue, we determined the last time when we voted to follow the state guidance, so it's going to have to go to the local boards. And there will be great and vigorous discussion all around, without a diss. Now, that puts us at six forty-three PM. I don't think, the appointment for Director of Student Services, I don't think we can complete in five minutes, Andy, you can call it that. Andy's on an executive session.
Well, we have to make, take the action outside, but
It is usually an executive session item, so I would propose that contracts with employees and employee evaluation would be an executive session item. But also, Andy, that's not going to be done in five minutes, so we are going to entertain a motion from somebody to recess the WNESU meeting until the BFUHS annual meeting is complete.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
Jack makes that motion. And I guess we will roll call Lynn.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
They do if we refuse.
Yeah, no.
Molly? Deb?
And because I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Priscilla. Jack? Brenda? We are recessed until some point after seven PM.
It's ten minutes after nine.
We have exited executive session at nine, ten PM. And we are back in open session.
Jesus.
We need to do the two first, the two.
Yes, with actions to be taken, does somebody have a motion with the names?
Do you want to do it?
And then do we need to done separately?
Do you want to do them separate? Yeah, you do the first one, I'll do the second one.
I move that we accept unpaid leave for Kyla Savine.
Yeah.
That's, that's the motion, through June twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I don't even think we have to, we just
Paid leave, okay, we for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, and it's time to vote, Cheryl, um Personnel, Cheryl?
Right, yes, I approve that.
Uh, Molly?
Yes.
We can have her vote, just the five of us.
It is just, okay. Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes, I.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack?
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes as well.
Yep, it's still not Robert's rule.
I, I would, I would move that we allow Cheryl gay
Surewood.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sherwood to take two unpaid leave days.
Okay.
In conjunction with her personal leave.
And we will, we'll call that to Cheryl.
I can't pass Cheryl because we have to, five of us.
Molly?
I'm, I'm not understanding, excuse me, I'm not understanding why Priscilla's saying I can't vote, it involves money.
As if we have you vote, we have to have seven of us. We have, we do not have that. We have to do a quorum of the three boards.
And it's pre, it's pre-July one, so we can exclude Westminster.
Oh.
And from a five, because our sixth person in, in here in the building had to leave earlier.
Yep.
Alright, thank, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate that.
Um, Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
Hi, Jack?
Yeah.
Next up.
Do you like A up?
It's the contact, contract?
The superintendent contract?
Yep.
Do you want to do that?
Sure, um, I move that we accept the superintendent contract.
As amended, because she has to change the date.
As amended, with, with the amended date, that we had authorized Jessica to negotiate with the superintendent.
And with the final draft approved by legal counsel.
With the final draft approved through legal counsel, yeah.
And Molly?
Yes.
And Deb?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Jack?
I voted in the approval.
Just trying to have a little fun.
And the fourth item is the MOU.
I think you're going to make a motion.
Yeah, you're going to make a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the MOU as suggested by superintendent and recommend its adoption by this and other boards.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Yes, and Molly?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Okay. Priscilla?
Yeah.
And Jack? Alright, hang on.
It doesn't pass.
I mean, you have to vote.
You voted yes.
I voted no.
You voted no.
I voted yes.
You voted yes. Jack abstained.
Abstained. It has to be, it has to be a quorum of the whole board.
This is repaying gifts to me.
It doesn't pass.
I am going to abstain.
So definitely doesn't pass.
No, it passes, it's two to one. It's a, abstention counts as effectively an authorization of a delegation of authority to the other members. So you can, you can literally have in a, in a committee, this is actually the example in, in my book, is you can have, you could have a ninety people in the room, eighty-five could abstain, and the, and, and the motion could carry three to two.
I plead no contest, that's what that is.
Yeah.
So the MOU passes by two yes votes, one no. And unless anyone has any further business
God forbid.
To bring to the board. I would like to declare us adjourned at nine to fourteen PM. Is that alright with you, Cheryl, since you're not in the room? Yes.
We should, we should make it clear what the MOU is, so that the public can be aware.
Uh, yes, I've shut down my laptop, it is the same MOU that Rockingham approved last night. It is retention and hiring bonuses that total a thousand dollars per employee.
Across the board.
Across the board. With some specifics how it's, how and when it'll be paid out, but the language will be available on the SU website. But the short of it is, it's a thousand dollars for every employee.
And it still needs to go to the other boards.
And it does need to be approved by the
Who hasn't approved?
Raffin Board.
High School Board.
And the High School Board. And a high school board. It's pre Westminster Board being in charge of themselves.
Okay.
Um, because the retention period started last August.
But it involves part of the time that we're, that we are responsible. It spans two budget years. Um, but at any rate, and when you refer to the board, it would be the Wind of Northeast Union Elementary School Board that needs to approve, but not the Grafton Board? Just a point of clarification.
I'm really correct, so.
The new change is not till till July and only if my uh, if the folks.
I think um symbolically, the Westminster School Board should definitely discuss approval of it, so we are unified across all the districts that exist or will exist during the timeframe of retention.
Thank you.
And.
And now.
Are we looking forward to that uh motion to adjourn?
Yes, we're looking forward to a motion to adjourn at nine sixteen PM.